I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much.
Thank God for mayor.
Kathleen, a little call please.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Proton?
Your honor, the first motion on agenda that the resignation of council member Tim Scott effective August 14th, 2017 caused a vacancy to incur on this Burlington City Council. Section 372.13 of the Iowa Code provides that the city council has the option for filling the vacancy by appointment. The Burlington City Council now appoints Becky Anderson to fill the council vacancy created by the resignation of council member Tim Scott effective September 18th, 2017 until regular election canvas certified and the top incumbent winning candidate is sworn in.
Second?
Second. Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Becky, you did it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome back.
Yeah.
You're glutton for punishment.
So you stand up.
Sure. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Rebecca Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The office of council member.
The office of council member.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me back.
Thanks. Glad to be back.
Before we go any further, would you like to say anything?
I don't really have, I guess it kind of feels like I haven't been gone, so I'm just ready to get to work and get through the next couple of months.
Yay.
Till the election.
Thank you.
Good choice, counsel. Good choice.
Amen. Amen. Well done. Mayor Proton?
Next is the proclamation. Whereas the city of Burlington honors Kenneth L. Hillier for his long tenure of outstanding service to citizens of Burlington, and whereas Kenneth has been an outstanding and dedicated employee for a little over forty-three years.
Wow.
And whereas Kenneth began his employment in September 1974 in the property maintenance department for the city of Burlington, after a short stay at property maintenance, he transferred to the streets and sewer division of Public Works. He worked in the street and sewer department on the day shift until September 8th, 1987. That is the date he became the designated night man for the street and sewers department, where he stayed until his retirement date. Think about that, folks. Since eighty-seven, the night person. Whereas Kenneth has been a loyal employee throughout his career with the city of Burlington, he received numerous letters of commendation from business owners downtown as well as emergency personnel throughout the city. He also worked many weekends and holidays away from his family during snowstorms and heavy rainy events. He will be missed by his city of Burlington colleagues and citizens of our community. Kenneth truly has made Burlington a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, we the city council, the city of Burlington, do hereby recognize and commend Kenneth for his conscientious and faithful service. We extend our appreciation and our congratulations on his successful career and wish him the very best in retirement. Signed and sealed this 18th day of September, 2017. Shane A. McCambell, Mayor. And do you want to do that right now?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do this right now, and we'll just give them to you at the same time. I also have a plaque for you, and before I read the plaque, I just want to say that I haven't known Kenneth all that long. The first time I really met him, I was slipping in to do some work about one or two o'clock in the morning, and he was downtown working like he was on a mission, and there was nobody around. It was like there was a camera on him. I told him, I said, "Man, slow down, you're gonna break something." He said, "Hey, just do what you gotta do." And I'll tell ya, if every city employee was like you, what a city we would have. So, just really blessed to give this to you. Says the city of Burlington hereby honors Kenneth Hillier in recognition and appreciation of forty-three years of dedication, service, faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington, and now he's punkin' out on us. I mean retiring, September 29th, 2017, presented by Burlington City Council. Come on down. Hey, don't pay me. You work for it. But I'd love to get a picture. Come on, guys, let's get a, do a picture taking with this guy, man. It's gonna be worth some money. How you want to do. Get one just for you. Should we try one where I'm not giving Jim Davidson rappers? was doing time with me, you know what I mean? Thank you. Thank you.
Thirty years.
It's been a pleasure to work for the city this long. I've seen a lot of bosses come and go and a lot of employees come and go, and it's been an outstanding job and a pleasure to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Forty-three years. All right. I hope to see you around town somewhere, and if you ever do run into me, make sure you say hello.
I sure will.
It'll be my pleasure to say hello back, my friend. Those of you that came for Kenneth, if you guys want to dip on out of here, you're more than welcome to do so now. Thank you for coming down.
You're welcome to join our church.
I appreciate that, Joe. Get out of here showing off your legs. Oh, we're still in the air. See you guys. All right. Okay, next on the agenda tonight is the consent. All matters listed under item one consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, thank you, sir. Minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have seven resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2017 wastewater treatment facility, emergency water, main repair. The third is a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the 1500 block of Sioux Street. The fourth is a resolution approving fiscal year 2016, 2017, street finance report, road use tax. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the city of Burlington to financially support the Great River Housing Trust Fund for fiscal year 2019, 2020. The sixth is a resolution authorizing grant application for improvements to the Dankwart Park Pool. The seventh is a resolution of support for the application of a challenge grant for the Burlington Depot and Greer's Restaurant. And we have five hearings set for September 20th. We've got the first one, consideration of a CDBG grant application for the Mazelotz Bazin, that's September 25th, 2017. I'm struggling reading tonight. The second is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 312 South 10th Street, city of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. That'll be on October 2nd. The third is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 425 Hagaman Avenue, city of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. That's October 2nd as well. The fourth is a consideration of an ordinance resoning outlet of three of Swisher subdivisions from R1, single-family residential, to R2, single-family residential transitional district. That'll be October 2nd. And then the fifth is a consideration of an ordinance amending section B, land use design criteria of ordinance number 3104 for the Burlington Senior Living Campus PUD. That is gonna be October 2nd. Yes, sir. Why are you leaving me, then? The sixth is consideration of plans and specs for the Flint Hills Golf Course Pump House Project, October 2nd. The seventh is consideration of an ordinance amending section 126.16, financial responsibility of chapter 126 taxi cabs and vehicles per hire of the Burlington Municipal Code, October 2nd. And then the last is a consideration of a proposed 2017 amendment to the Burlington Urban Revitalization Plan. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? I see none. Counsel?
No, sir.
Your honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under item one consent agenda.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
All right.
All right, this is time set for hearing for consideration of a permanent easement associated with the 2017 Harrison Street Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project. Mr. Mack?
The easement in front of you is to go along with the Harrison Street project that you awarded a couple of weeks ago, contingent upon BNSF approval. This easement area will not change, even if there's a little bit of a scope change, depending on what BNSF comes back with. So, at that point, we recommend approval for this easement area.
Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
No. No, thanks.
Motion to close?
Second?
Second.
Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of an easement from 2100 River Street for the construction of storm sewer associated with the 2017 Harrison Street Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project.
Second. Moved to second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of an easement from 2100 River Street for the construction of storm sewer associated with the 2017 Harrison Street Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project.
Second. Moved to second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing proceeding with the sale process for Flint Hills Golf Course.
Second.
Last week, you had Jim Whipple's from Spirit Hollow on behalf of Wine Guard Realty Company that presented the offer to purchase Flint Hills Golf Course. Their goal is, as was stated, was not to continue operations, but to be able to shut it down. The offer that they provided was to purchase the assets and property for $200,000. One of the later terms in their offer, I think it's under section nine, talks about additionally, as they were to redevelop that property, sell it off, or whether it's agricultural purposes or redevelopment, that 50% of the proceeds, net of marketing costs, et cetera, would go to the city as well. So the way the offer is set up, the actual dollar amount could potentially be higher, it just depends on what resale was on the land. If you were to move forward with this, we, there are some concerns with the actual land. This was provided to the city from the state of Iowa, is that correct, Eric?
Yeah.
And there's some language in there that we would at least have to work, do some negotiations with the state for the portion of the property that had come from this, from the state, as to whether we could actually sell it or not, or if we would have to turn it back to them. That being said, we would worry about that if you were actually, were actually looking to move forward with the offer that's presented. I know that Mr. Whipple's also did express, I don't know that he did in the meeting itself, but did send an email afterwards, that they would certainly be willing to, if this offer wasn't satisfactory and you wanted different terms to consider, they would be willing to negotiate with the council. But this is up to you to make a decision, whether you want to continue to operate the facility or not.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
Mike Elmer, 620 Iowa Street here in Burlington. As a citizen here that doesn't play golf, but has seen that golf course operate since I was a child, I would hate to see the city sell an asset that actually makes them money, that offers an alternative to the golf community, and I would just ask on behalf of citizens that maybe you consider not doing this sale.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience?
John Billups, 800 North Front. I would ask you to consider not continuing on with the sale process. One, if you are going to decide to sale, put the golf course for sale, you ought to offer it up for everybody. Post it, list it, and see what offers you get. One of the things we always hear about is there's nothing for youth to do in town, and there are youth leagues out there, there's high school leagues that play at Flint Hills. This is a municipal golf course, it's for beginners to average golfers, which we don't have that if we close Flint Hills. So please, please do not consider the sale at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Any other comments from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Couple things, maybe?
I'd point out a couple of things just related, relevant to those comments. The assets of the golf course can be sold without a public hearing. I think for the sale of the land, we would probably have to go through a public hearing process and allow competitive offers to come in on that. The other comments in regards to the golf course making money, it does not. We do pay to support the capital costs that are associated with that out of hotel motel funds. Some of our other operations, such as solid waste sewer, we have a transfer from those funds to the general fund to account for payroll processing, accounts payable processing, hiring, firing, et cetera, things like that, the general oversight. We do not do that with a golf course. We have some hidden subsidies that we have of the golf course, too, that we don't make them account for in their operation. That being said, it is, it does fill a niche within the community that's fairly important.
I know some have suggested that by selling the course and developing it and selling residential lots, then the property taxes would offset whatever loss, but that's in the county, isn't it?
Correct.
So it would be county property taxes, not city property taxes, so.
I'm not interested in going forward.
That would be a one-time deal. And I do want to say, this whole thing came up, we talked about this, because when we were talking about how we're gonna balance the budget, how to make things work, we were looking for different ways to make this work. And so, it was my idea to look at this and see if there's some way to make the golf course not necessarily profitable, but at least make its way, make its own way. This is not what I had in mind. Certainly not selling the thing and closing it down. That is not what my end goal was. My goal was to try to find some way to explore different options, see if we can make it so we don't have to do all the subsidies. I guess that's enough said for me.
I just want to throw in there that I like the direction that the golf course is moving in, and though it's not making money or breaking, even the amount of money that is, that it's lost, or that is a loss, I think at certain, some point in time, you've gotta weigh it out, and you have to see, well, what is good for the community. I do want to throw this in there, too. There are a lot of communities out there, and I know other mayors that, one in particular that they want, they're trying to get a golf course in their community, and it's tough, and it's gonna cost a whole lot of money. We've already got this asset here, so, again, I hear, I agree with what Jim was saying. We're looking at everything, but wasn't quite looking at it quite like this. Any other comments?
I guess I would just say, I haven't heard from anybody that wants to sell it. Anybody I've heard from wants to keep it, and, you know, I guess I didn't like the terms, anyway. There's 172 acres out there, and to think that we would get $200,000 and then half of what? I mean, there's a big question mark even whether that would be sold or developed, so I guess, you know, even above that, I did not care for the terms of the offer.
Yeah, I definitely think that, I have zero knowledge on golfing, but from listening to several constituents and people who do golf, that the level that our golf course offers is for those who are not as professional, those who are starting out, which is, you know, very necessary for those who enjoy golfing, or who want to start out golfing. You can't just jump into something that's more professional. So I do think that, from listening to people, that that's what I've learned. So I don't think that it's something that we necessarily need to get rid of at this point in time, just because it isn't a huge moneymaker for the city right now.
Well, let's.
What do we do next?
Let's put money to mouth, my friend. That's what we're gonna do next.
We have to have a motion, or?
Already have a motion.
Vote yes is, a vote yes is to, is to sell. A vote no is to, is not to sell the course. Captain?
Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
No.
McCambell?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Okay. All right. At this time, we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there anybody from the audience? Yes, sir. I knew you were coming, Mr. Renneria.
My name is Eric Renneria, I live at 907 High Street. I wanted to talk a little bit about parking, and I had approached the council about getting on the agenda, but really, I just have a couple of comments. I'm a goal-oriented person, and so I went to all the parking meetings, and attended and watched what was presented, and asked specifically of the city staff, what's the goal, what do you, what do you hope to get out of the parking study that was done? You know, what are you going to do with that? The answer was three, there were three goals. One was to have enough parking for people who live downtown. Two was to have enough parking for people who work downtown. And three was to have enough parking for people who shop downtown. There was also a discussion about having some kind of incentive to encourage people to move over to the new parking method where you would park from seven in the morning till five o'clock in the evening. I subsequently learned that the incentive was to increase the cost for keeping what you have, which to me is not an incentive, it's more of a stick than a carrot. And my impression throughout the whole process was that the cost of parking from seven to five would go down, and instead, what happened is to keep what you have, the price went up, and it's now a $600 tax to have a parking spot downtown, which is, was never in the discussion process. And I apologize that I missed the city council discussion about how that was gonna take place, but I just wanted to express my frustration that you go to these meetings, you attend all the parking things, and then, and you ask very specifically what the goals are, and nowhere in there was increasing revenue out of the new parking scheme ever in the, ever in the, in the mix. It just wasn't in there. There was supposed to be an incentive, so if you were paying 8250 a quarter for 24-hour parking, you were supposed to get an incentive to switch over to seven to five. If you're getting an incentive, then it should've gone down from 8250, it shouldn't have gone double to keep what you have. For those of us who need 24-hour parking downtown, this is just a huge additional burden for downtown businesses. So I'm not sure what the process is to get the council to reconsider the billing structure for parking downtown, but I would certainly like to have you guys take that up and change that process.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from, any other comments from the audience? You all have been so wonderful tonight. Damn, what an audience. Mr. Tisland, close your remarks.
Just a couple of comments. Our Brownfield Planning Grant, area-wide planning and assessment grant, we have a Brownfield Sponsor Group staff and some other community individuals that have been meeting on that, and had a meeting this morning. And progressing along, our consultants have done a market analysis and are looking at some of the sites. Our Brownfield area-wide planning is focused on the downtown area and kind of starting the process of getting community involvement, and one aspect is getting council and planning commission involvement. So we're looking at, I guess as discussed this morning, October 12th at 4:30, having a joint meeting with the council and planning commission and the Brownfield Sponsor Group at 4:30. Wanted to see if that would work for all or most of the council before we set kind of our next steps in line. We're gonna be having community meetings and other stakeholder meetings, but wanted to get this group or the council together to make sure we're going in the correct path and have some discussions with council and planning commission along those lines. So, just as I said, we just met this morning and looking at October 12th, it's a Thursday at 4:30, to have that joint meeting with council and planning commission and the sponsor group, and wanted to see if that would work so we can get some agendas set. And again, talking about the market analysis that was done by our consultants, also looking at catalyst sites in the downtown, where are some key sites that we want to focus on, and what's the priority for council looking at those sites.
Well, all right then, my friend.
October 12th work, or do you need to, the folks need to check on that and get back?
I'm gonna have to check.
If you want to email back, or just in some way let either Katie or Eric know.
Well, say send out to council and everybody can respond, but I think I'm good, but yeah, let's, let's.
I'm good.
And that's at 4:30.
Thursday. October 12th.
So, Eric, could you just send us an email and then we could respond? Please.
Okay.
Well, I got it. I'll get it.
Okay.
And again, that would be with planning commission and our sponsor group as well, and then we're having some follow-up meetings with the community after that, so we're wanting to kind of get a timeline set in place so we can get some input from you guys.
Do you have anything else? Would you give us an update on the?
Salter School.
Salter School?
Talked to the developer, Richard Silva, I think it was last week, and he'd gone to the Iowa Housing Conference, I think it was in Cedar Rapids, and looking at the scoring further, there's three categories where he felt they could've gotten some scoring in previously under applications, but that, those no longer award points, so he doesn't feel, talking with his partner on this, that they would have a, I guess, a good chance of scoring well in an application, so they've decided not to move forward at this time with the project.
Okay. Thank you.
And Yipow School is moving ahead, is that correct?
Correct. Yep. We've transferred the deed to the site, he's started some initial, I guess just cleaning up on the property. Hope to meet with him in the coming weeks to kind of get an outline or timeframe moving forward on that.
I think my son's even doing some type of a, not a laser tag, but something like that that they're doing in there. He's organizing in there.
Oh, really?
You didn't invite me. Thought we were friends. It's ridiculous.
Where'd you get that idea?
I don't know.
As you've seen, we did have no trespassing signs from the city of Burlington, those are, have been taken down, so it's no longer a city property. If there's something there, it's a private property.
Okay. Kathleen, anything to throw in the fray? Okay. Council lady, Antony?
Yes, oh, all kinds of events going on this week, as usual. Wednesday starts up the Burlington Lunchtime Music Chamber Series at the First United Methodist Church. I'm very, on this Wednesday, and it's from 12:15 to 12:45, so head down there if you're in the area. Let's see, Friday is the Member Appreciation Night at the Art Center, so it's a whole family, family event, and that'll be fun.
Cool.
Yep, live music, food, drink. That's from 5:00 to 8:00. Saturday starts the Friends Fall Book Sale at the library.
Oh, yes.
Stock up on some good reading. That's from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00. And then Sunday is the Pops Concert, put on by the Southeast Iowa Symphony Orchestra. That's from, starts at 7:30 PM. It's only.
What's the theme for that?
It is, if you would ask, right when I go for a blank, tribute to John Williams. from, starts at 7:30 PM, it's only...
What's the theme for that?
It is, oh, if you would ask, right when I go for a blank, Tribute to John Williams, so he did all kinds of scores for popular music like Jurassic Park and Star Wars. And adults is only $15, students and kids are free, that'll be fun, that's at Burlington, auditorium.
Auditorium.
Yep. And that is all that I have.
Alright, that sounds like plenty.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebecca, what's her name?
You know what I'm excited about, that I've been waiting a year for, is this Fireball Run starting, and that it is interactive or something, so to have, to be sitting by a celebrity and know that I can watch him every minute and what he's going to be doing.
Oh, you're gonna get in trouble for that.
So tune in, everybody, I think that address is out there, I know it was published on Facebook, but we can see everything he's doing, I just think, I think that's gonna be a lot of fun.
Look at the chief, man, Big Chief's back there just grinning, makes a lot big, I appreciate it. Alright, um, yeah, we're gonna be doing the Fireball Run, we're all in, so we want Burlington to back us up. We're coming in, rolling in town on the 26th at 3:00, we'll be downtown. Look at Big, man, it's like, uh, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of fun, it's gonna be a big deal for Burlington, so let's make sure we come out and show them what we're all about. Mama Dee, I want to see you down there. Again, that'll be the 26th at 3:00 PM that we roll in, from 3:00 to 6:00 downtown on Jefferson Street. And I went to the, down to the auditorium this weekend, they have the Texas Trio down there, I don't know if anybody's, if anybody's seen them.
Texas Tenors.
Excuse me, don't interrupt me when I'm talking, but anyways, the, yeah, the Texas Tenors, and it was a phenomenal show, it was awesome. I enjoyed myself so much that I'm going back to get my season tickets, and I would just encourage everybody, if you have not done the civic music scene and been down to the auditorium for the shows that they have, it was a really good time. And that's not normally my bag of tricks, but I enjoyed it so much, I'm all in, just want to encourage everybody out to get down, take advantage of it, it's a good time in Burlington, so. Mayor Pro Tim?
Nothing at this time, but I reserve the right...
You always do, Bishop. James?
Can always get your chicken on Thursday, Rotary Chicken Barbecue.
Yes, yeah.
Wesleyan University was in town today. Dr. Titus, along with one of their new board members, Kristy Vilsack, know that they spent time with the paper, they were with the school system, having some discussions, made a presentation at Rotary, and two of her bank hosted them this afternoon for a public forum, or, a reception, not a public forum, is a reception. Part of what they're trying to do is communicate a message from, to be Southeast Iowa's university, and trying to figure out how do they, how can they partner and make sure that they're a good community member with all of the communities here in Southeast Iowa, in a way that provides the educational opportunities that are necessary to able, and able to help us to grow as a region. You know, they really talked about the success that they've had over the last few years, it's just a few years ago, they were making significant cuts to their programs, well, they've seen, I think it's 160% enrollment growth over the last three years. They went from on-house residents, they were using about 45% of their beds or rooms being used, this year it's 94%. So they're, they have had some, seen some significant strides as a university, and that's really something that needs to be commended, encouraged, and celebrated, and we, we need that to be able to be successful long-term as a region, so. They want to make sure that they're able to be a good partner with all members within the community, and just to be, just make sure that, they should be commended for that, and make sure that we keep them at the forefront of, of our thoughts for how we can move forward as a, as a community. That's all I have.
James, also, when's the, the new candidate forum, the upcoming?
There's a, one candidate forum, it's this Thursday evening, 7:00 to 9:00. The chamber hosts theirs, I think the first week in October, the 3rd and the 5th, they're, they'll have half of the, well, seven of the members one night and eight of the members the other, other night.
The one Thursday will be on, on Channel 17?
I would assume so, that'll, that'll be hosted here, and I would assume that yes, it will be on Channel 17. Although I don't get cable, I wouldn't know what channels or what, so...
Are you coming just to heckle those of us that are right here?
Absolutely not. I wouldn't want nobody coming to heckle me. Oh, I don't have to worry about that.
Did you say this coming Thursday?
The, yes.
Yes.
The 21st.
Is that the League of Women Voters that does that?
Oh.
Business and professional women.
That, okay, okay.
What, what time?
Seven o'clock.
That's at 7:00, and it's scheduled for two hours. All 15 candidates up here at one point, so it's, it's gonna be a packed house.
Alright, it's gonna be a party right here in Burlington, so make sure you tune in, I'm gonna have my popcorn, alright? Nothing else?
Your honor, I move that we adjourn.
Second. Moved to second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
That means adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.